Good afternoon, welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing meeting for today. Ms. Fister, would you please read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council. Good afternoon, and this is the advanced briefing from Monday, July 25. And we'll begin with item one, our consent agenda. Purchase of up to three used vehicles will be used as undercover units for the Spokane Police Department. Our presenter is Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council. About three weeks ago, an SPO passed establishing funding for these three used undercover vehicles. This is just to get preapproval so that we can go to market and find them and start negotiations. The price is not to exceed $120,000, including commissioning and tax. Any questions?
Just, so it seemed like $40,000 a vehicle if you get a new vehicle for that. And so is there, what are your thoughts about whether you really, I mean, we've approved the money, and if you don't spend it, then they're that much closer to the next vehicle that we need. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are about the market, the used car market.
The used car market is high. In a lot of cases, we're hearing used vehicles going as high as new vehicles because you can't get the new vehicles in some cases. We did a market study on these. That's kind of the high end of it. And then, of course, we have commissioning involved in that, too, which could be, it's minimal on these vehicles, but it's still a fair amount of money to commission the vehicles and, of course, pay sales tax.
Okay. Is there like an example type of model, just so we have a picture in our mind of what it'd be?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't have the list handy, but we were looking at things like Nissan Rogues and then some pickups, just kind of a random kind of example of used vehicles across the market. For undercover vehicles, of course, we want a wide variety. And so, again, the 40, you know, we're looking at somewhere in the $25,000 to $35,000 range for the vehicles in most cases.
Thanks.
Here's a quick example. So we're looking at a new car for my wife, and a used Chevy Traverse, which is not a super nice vehicle in any way, with 32,000 miles, was $30,000. And so I know that we try to keep it under a certain amount of miles and everything like that. And, like you said, the used car market is pretty high right now. So, yeah, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess, I would just say, I don't think anybody would expect to see an officer driving around in a 2000 Geo Metro, so maybe that's one option we could think about, but save some money. But, beyond that, I would just be curious, you said there's a considerable amount that goes into the commissioning cost-wise. I mean, what percentage of it is the commissioning aspect of it?
On an undercover vehicle, I would say less than 10% in most cases. There are a few special circumstances where we'll want a radio or some mounts or storage in the trunk, but we try to keep it as minimal as possible when it comes to commissioning.
Okay. Great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Next item on the consent agenda is a contract renewal with ESO Solutions for annual subscription fees for the Incident Record Management System. And item three, a contract amendment with N4 Public Sector to add a stationary learning interface to the city's existing computer-aided dispatch system. I believe the presenter is Dusty Patrick.
I received an out-of-office from him, but didn't have anyone else to send it to in there.
And I did not receive a response back to who might be representing him this afternoon.
We can just hear from next week if we need to.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Item four is a multifamily housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with multiple organizations for a cause on West Fourth LLC, 4B, 314 Riverside LLC, 4C, Brick on Wall LLC. And our presenter is Terry Stripes.
One moment while I cue this up. We're looking at three different multifamily tax exemption conditional agreements, all of them are in Council District Two. So our sponsors are Councilwoman Kinnear and Wilkerson. So just as a reminder, with multifamily tax exemption, the purposes, why do we use this tool? This tool is to help encourage more multifamily housing opportunities, including affordable housing within the city of Spokane. It is to stimulate the construction of new multifamily housing, even in vacant and underutilized buildings. It is to increase the supply of mixed income with multifamily housing. And it helps us realize our goals for GMA and our comprehensive plan. We use this tool to help promote and create economic development, community development, and neighborhood revitalization. And we also oftentimes partner this incentive with historic preservation. That goes back to making certain that we're trying to utilize those existing buildings, not necessarily just removing things from the built environment. So our first item is Cause on Fourth. Cause on Fourth is zoned office retail at 150 feet. Its cost estimate is $45 million. This is also a federally recognized opportunity zone fund investor, investing in a distressed economic census tract. This is in the Cliff Cannon neighborhood, and once it's constructed, they do plan on pursuing a 12-year exemption post-construction, which means they're going to have rent and income restrictions. Their requirement would be 20%, but this company says that every unit will be hitting the affordable.
Wow.
This is what we're looking at right now. We talk about underutilized spaces. This is kind of a vacant lot, and it's a little bit blighted. We've got a bit of graffiti there, so this product, project is going to replace that.
That's just east of Elsie High School Gym, I think.
That's my understanding, yes. So the next one is brick-on-wall apartments. This property used to be SNAPs, and it used to be single occupancy residences. Now it's going to be multifamily. It's going to have 24 units. It is downtown zoning, which is allowable for multifamily. It's a 2.7 million reconstruction, because remember, this is an existing building. They're converting it and bringing it up to code. This is Riverside neighborhood. Again, this project is planning on attempting the 12-year. And again, this is another applicant that said, we're likely to be all affordable, not necessarily a mix. But we'll see post-construction where they land.
This current building, does it have people living in it right now, or is it?
SNAP moved them out a while ago.
Okay.
And the demolition, the interior demolition, I'm told is pretty extensive. This is the building we're looking at. Councilwoman Stratton?
I just like the building. Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
What's going to be on the bottom?
I don't know at this point. They've talked about possibly going mixed use, but they're still in that fact-finding phase of trying to figure out exactly how they're going to make everything work. So, once we get through construction, we'll know if it's going to be mixed use. If it is mixed use to qualify for multifamily, the structure has to be, at minimum, 50% residential.
Right. Thank you.
The next project is Jensen Bird. And this is not the Jensen Bird building that is on the WSU campus, okay? Everybody, as soon as I say it's Jensen Bird, everybody goes there. This is the second Jensen Bird building that is on Riverside. This project is actually three buildings that are connected. It's going to be 73 units. The zoning, again, is downtown, so this is allowable. Its estimated construction cost, again, is renovation. It's going to be 13.5 million. It is located in the Riverside neighborhood. And again, they are planning to hit that affordability component. And I also do not know if they're going to end up with some mixed use in this project. Too early to tell yet. This is the building and what it looks like now. They are also talking with Historic Preservation. I don't know if this would be a qualifying building, or if they will continue to pursue that, but they have talked to Historic Preservation. And that is the end of the conditional agreements. Any additional questions? Thank you.
Great work, Terry. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Item five on the consent agenda for advanced briefing.
Sorry, quickly, City Administrator, did we skip number three on this item? I know that it was also being...
Two and three. Two and three.
So two and three, we just, I didn't know if we needed to announce that we skipped number three as well.
Yes, sir. I read off both of them at the same time, and Mr. Patrick was not present. Item five on the advanced agenda for Monday, July 25, is a grant agreement with the Washington State Department of Ecology for funding to be used for the purchase of hazmat equipment for the Spokane Fire Department. Presenter is Fire Chief Julie Oberg.
Thank you, members of Council. This is in order to enter into a grant agreement with the Washington Department of Ecology for hazardous materials grant in the amount of $54,700, which would be used for both Class B foam and some other hazardous material equipment replacement.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item six, it's a contract amendment with Stuart A. Estes and the law firm of Keating, Buckland &amp; McCormick for outside counsel services and advice in the matter of state of David Novak. Presenter is the interim city attorney, Mr. Lyndon Smithson.
Good afternoon, President Beggs and council members. I'm here asking to modify the contract with our outside counsel. We need an increase in the funds for litigation. As everybody knows, this case arises out of 2017. It was an officer-involved shooting. We have not admitted liability, and we think that there is a question of liability if it went to trial, and that's why we're defending it. We went to mediation recently. The sides were very far apart. We learned in mediation that the highest cost out, or the highest payout that has occurred in, on the east side of the mountains, is about $8 million for an officer-involved shooting. That had more issues of liability than our case, so we do not believe that it's even in that ballpark. But the plaintiff's counsel, their demand is still well excessive, $8 million, and it's excessive $10 million. So we're vigorously defending it. Counsel has spent a lot of time on it. Some issues with the plaintiff's counsel have kind of increased the cost of litigation, I would say. They're inexperienced in this type of case, and so it has kind of driven, kind of driven our costs up as well. So we believe that an extra $200,000 will get us through the end of litigation. I do not, I would hope that I would not be back here asking for money, more money on this case. Any questions? Yes?
So I keep hearing that the opposing counsel really is going through a lot of different scenarios, gyrations, whatever you want to call them. So I'm really concerned that every time legal has come to us, we think the next amount will get us through this litigation.
Yes.
And I understand it's a very wide space between what they're asking for and what we're willing to settle. So I'm just challenging you on this amount at this time, because it starts to feel like we may end up in court on this.
Sure. And we are set for trial. I believe that, this says October, but I believe it is, I think maybe that's when the trial date is. It could be August, but we're rapidly approaching trial. Our counsel believes that no matter what happens, even if some more discovery issues pop up, we go to trial, he believes that we would be well within the amount with the additional $200,000. Also, our litigation attorneys in the city council's office, I'm sorry, the city attorney's office, they are surprised at how high it's gotten. We have not seen a bill this high in recent past. So it's one of those cases that it's just been a very difficult case. We're all hoping to resolve it, but we can't promise that.
I just have a quick question. So how do you determine if it's going to be a local firm or a out-of-city? Because this firm's from Seattle.
They are. And they're very specialized in these types of cases.
Okay.
And that is the only reason we selected them.
Okay.
Definitely, we know a lot of the attorneys in town. We have great respect for a lot of attorneys in town, but this firm specializes in officer-involved type litigation. So they're top of the game, and that's the only reason we would go into a Seattle firm.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
If it goes to trial, are we going to be using them in that trial as well? And if so, then could, I mean, is $200,000 going to be enough to carry us all the way through?
Yes. And short answer, yes, we would use them. They would be our trial attorneys. Now, it's a little bit unusual, because we pay the first $1.5 million in litigation, and we have an excess coverage, or excess policy coverage. And they kind of, they were involved in the mediation, because they will pay anything over the $1.5 million. So we have worked with them. They've been closely working with us in the case and kind of directing which way we go. So we have a lot of eyes on this. We have a lot of extremely professional people involved in this, and we're getting the best representation we can. I can definitely say that.
And we get, if for some reason the verdict was over our limits, we get a credit for all the attorney's fees that we paid, so we get to push that against the amount, so...
Yes. I don't like the amount as much as anybody else, so...
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Item seven is a low bid to be determined at bid opening. That should happen today, Monday, July 18, for residential grind and overlay. Our presenter, who I believe is online, Mr. Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item seven is for the 2021 Residential Grind and Overlay North Project, which is blank on your agenda, but we opened bids this afternoon. And inland asphalt in Spokane is the apparent low bidder at $3,133,133, to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. We still need to check this bid carefully for all the appropriate criteria, since it just opened two hours ago. We haven't yet had time to do that. Inland's bid was one of two bids received, and was approximately $293,000, or about 10% over the engineer's estimate. This project grinds and overlays streets at various locations on the north side, as shown in the briefing paper in your agenda packet. And this project is funded by the Transportation Benefit District. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Items eight and nine. Item eight is a contract amendment with ABM Industry Groups for janitorial services for the Spokane Police Department properties. Item nine is a renewal of Celebrite software for use by the Spokane Police Department Digital Forensics Lab. Our presenter is Shawna Ernst.
Good afternoon. Item eight is an amendment to the ABM janitorial contract. It covers the property facility, Academy, Gardner, and Precinct. Prevailing wage increased by $1.65 an hour from LNI, so we are, costs are going to increase for this contract that runs through 2024. The annual increase is about $5,300 for a total of $15,900 increased.
So when we look at the wage per hour, so what's that bring it to per employee?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't have that info.
Okay.
I just found out I'm presenting this today, so, sorry.
If you have it, if you could send it, I would just be curious to see what the minimum wage is. Okay.
Yeah, I'll get that over to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? Okay, so the second item is to purchase a suite of software for the digital forensics lab. That's the lab that I manage under Taru. And you've previously authorized the funding for this out of forfeiture dollars, so you allocated $65,000. This contract for the whole software suite is about $63,000. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shawna. Thank you for pinch hitting on item eight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Item 10 is a report of the mayor on pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations with Parks and Library. Item 11, city council meeting minutes. Both items will have their complete information detailed and presented for council's approval and consideration on Monday, July 25. Under special budget ordinance, I believe we just had a briefing from Chief Oberg on this item, fire grants miscellaneous fund. This is the updated budget for the Department of Ecology hazmat equipment grant award. And I believe she just presented on that, so we're good there. Thank you, Chief Oberg. Under resolution and final reading ordinances, our first resolution is relating to modification of city of Spokane's retail water service area. Our presenter is Mr. Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon. We do have four sites that we're looking at modification of the boundary. Three of them are in the West Plains area, one in northwest Spokane. Eight parcels total on there, and if you want me to show the map, I can show them to you now, too. But primarily, we're just requesting a modification of the boundary to actually put them in the situation where they can actually apply to the county for actual water service at some point in time. We're not telling anybody right now that you actually have water availability the minute we put you in the boundary. We know we have some limitations out in the West Plains and also in northwest Spokane. So we do have, like I say, eight parcels total. They're all in the urban growth boundary, so they're all in an area where we're intending to actually provide that service, and we really think we're going to have that available in the next couple of years, based on our programs. But they will have to actually put an application together the minute we put them in the retail water service boundary. We'll have some limitations on that right now until we're assured we can meet our regulations as far as the Department of Health, the state, and city regulations for water service. So if you'd like me to show the sites, or we can do it next week when we actually have the hearing, I'm at your pleasure, whatever you'd like to see.
It might be next week, then the public could, yeah.
May I? So Eldon, we spoke, I spoke with Marlene about this, because I was a little confused. I want to make sure everybody knows that, as you said, just because we do this doesn't mean people automatically get water. There's a process to go through, but it's important that, as the purveyor, that we keep that distinction so that we don't lose the right to provide water to those areas.
That's correct. During our water service area, and we basically want to make sure in our area that we don't give up the water rights or anything to actually provide service. We're just not necessarily ready to do it today.
Exactly. So it was instructive, illuminating. Thank you. I just, if you all have questions for him, for Eldon or Marlene, he's right there.
No, it was informative to me, because I was kind of hard-nosed, like, well, why are we committing to something we can't deliver today? But this is in the future, and we can condition it, as you said, as we go forward. So I certainly am in support of moving forward with this.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks.
Our next item on the Monday, July 25, advanced agenda resolution, expressing the intention of the city council to designate a residential targeted area. Presenter again is Terry Stripes.
Counsel, thank you. So this item is a resolution setting a hearing where we will amend the target area for where the incentive is available for multifamily tax exemption, and amending the code so that we can take into account the changes that are required under the state changes, our staff recommendations, and our committee's recommendations. We will be briefing that ordinance on the first, and this resolution will set the hearing as the 15th. Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stripes. Next, under resolution, is reaffirming and supporting current laws in Washington State that impact abortion access in Spokane. And I have listed council president.
Yeah, we briefed this today at committee, and essentially, this is focusing on whether or not we use Spokane City Police resources to try to investigate and prosecute people who are coming from out of state to seek abortion services within the city of Spokane. And it would say no. And we had a good discussion, and there might be a few language tweaks before it comes.
All right. Thank you, sir. And the final item I have, under my packet for advanced agenda, Monday, July 25, under special considerations, S1A, S1B. S1A is a final reading ordinance submitting a ballot proposition to the voters of City of Spokane, amending the duties of the city attorney and other legal counsel. And S1B is the resolution requesting the Spokane County Auditor hold a special election on November 8 to submit to the voters, again, to modify the powers and duties of the city attorney and other legal counsel.
And we briefed that not too long ago, but essentially, it would just put it on the ballot for voters to decide whether or not the city attorney has an appointment of seven years, subject to termination only if both the mayor and the council disagreed for cause. It would also allow the mayor to hire the mayor's own attorney, since the city attorney would no longer be considered the mayor's attorney, and the city council the same. They could hire their own attorney, since the city attorney would no longer be considered their attorney. There is, we have discussed briefly with the mayor and Administrator Perkins, the language on how the city attorney would be appointed, and so there could be a slight amendment to that if we continue that discussion.
Just a question, is the, as it's drafted under special consideration B, is that the ballot title?
I don't know.
I guess, do we have a ballot title? Maybe it's in the packet, and I just don't have it in front of me.
I also don't have it in front of me, so, I don't know, but we'll figure it out before next week.
Okay.
Yeah, and who shapes the language on that if it goes to the ballot?
I think...
I believe if I might ask our council and interim HR director, Mr. Mike Piccolotta.
Bonus, he's in the room.
So the ordinance before you does have the ballot title in there. So it does have the proposition with the exact language, and the city attorney's office drafts that language for the council. And if this were initiative, we'd also draft that language in cooperation with, or in conjunction with the sponsor, so same function that we would perform.
Thanks, Mike. All right, that's the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is approved for next week. We have a few requests for changes for tonight's agenda. We have a few requests for changes for tonight's agenda. The first, it's a potential motion to defer ordinance 36234 for two weeks. Those are the criminal justice reform funds from the legislature. We're looking for a report on the money that's been spent on training so far, which is what that money was mostly spent for. We got an email, but it didn't list the amount of money on training and whether or not that was allocated to these funds. I'm not sure that it was. So we made a request at the last public safety meeting to get a report on that, and we haven't gotten that yet, to that detail.
So I move to defer for two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred for two weeks. And let's see, I'll get to adding things, but.
Do we need to suspend the rules?
But we're going to have to suspend the rules. So there's three different requests to add things. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on suspending the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? The rules are suspended. And now I'm looking at page nine regarding ordinance C36245, to put that on the agenda for tonight. And maybe before we have that, if Mr. Piccolo wants to just tell us what that is.
Yes, this SBO was briefed earlier at the Finance Committee meeting. It's the same SBO where we're moving money from salary savings into the contract category under the HR budget so that we can issue a minor contract to bring in some assistance from Archright for the HR department.
Okay. Is there a motion to add C36245 to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, the next one is on first reading of ordinances. And it.
Wait, it's the emergency ordinance. We wanted to further.
Oh.
On page nine.
Page nine. Right there. Yes. Rules don't have to be suspended for that, but yes. So it is regarding emergency ordinance on the criteria for citing essential city facilities. And is there a motion to defer that for two weeks?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. So in speaking with our utilities director, she's concerned that utilities is also part of this, and we need time to meet with Legal, meet with her to perhaps find different wording so that we're not holding up a water tank or some other vital piece of infrastructure that we need.
What would be the purpose of not doing all city buildings if what we're trying to do is?
Yeah, so I think what the actual concern, well, I shouldn't say the actual concern, but the concern that I understood was that in this ordinance, it says you can attack the sighting of a facility if it didn't go through the process. And I think they're worried that the language is so broad that you could attack the sighting of the facilities on the merits. So not that you didn't have a hearing, but that you could say, no, that location is not the location. And that was not the intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is only for process, though you can't, if you don't like what the city council decides at the end of the day, you can't go to court about it. But if they didn't do the hearing about it, then you could.
So it's not exempting certain city apartments?
They framed their request wanting it to exempt it, but I don't think that that's what we would be doing. We were simply getting some language that they feel comfortable that someone could only attack something for a lack of process, not on the merits.
Okay.
For the exact reason that you mentioned.
Right.
Any further discussion? Did we get a second on that?
I did.
Okay, sorry. All right, all those in favor of the deferral for two weeks indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred. Then I'm to page 10, first reading of ordinances. And this was the city attorney, the ordinance that was briefed for the 25th, or not the ordinance, well, it is an ordinance, but the resolution and ordinance that would put it on the ballot. But it needs to be a first reading tonight in order to be a final reading coming up. So is there a motion to add C36244 to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay?
Nay.
About two nays? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, it's added as first reading. And then on page 11, there's a motion, oh, excuse me, there's a requested motion to, well, we already suspended council rules, to accept a substitute version of ordinance C36232. This is the interim zoning ordinance that requested by the planning department for some additional changes that they've circulated, I believe.
So, yeah, I'll also move the substitute.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And just to clarify, there's another proposed ordinance coming in a moment, but this is going to be the baseline one. So any discussion on this substitution?
Yes. I don't know, it feels like we've substituted a couple of times on this. Is this the last time that we're going to be substituting the language?
I hope so.
I guess. Because I just, you know, I mean, the public who's following along, I mean, it's hard to recognize and understand the changes. So I just want to make sure whichever one we're going with, that's what we're sticking with.
And I believe, Terry, that this language is the one that's posted on the web. So this is what the public is seeing right now.
And could somebody please, for the public, tell us what the change is?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Beck will tell us.
Good after, good afternoon, council president, council members. So this substitute, this request for a substitute version is only for the ordinance recitals. Legal took an additional look at our ordinance and said, we can strengthen our case for how the building opportunity and choices for all interim zoning ordinance is furthering the policies in the comp plan. So we added an additional whereas recital. If you're looking in your agenda packet, in the beginning of the ordinance language itself, it's on the second page, and it's the third whereas. That's the new whereas that we added in. The second was just a clerical error on our part that a member of the public caught, and so we changed to make sure that it referenced the correct section in our work plan that is included in the ordinance. Can I answer any other questions?
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, substituted now. Councilmember Kinnear.
I would like to make an amendment to this that we just passed that would say, notwithstanding other provisions of Title 17 SMC, multifamily residential structures of three or four units shall be permitted on all lots in the RSF, RTF, RMF, and RHD zones subject to the following criteria. A, the parcel is wholly or partially within one quarter mile of a major transit stop, or B, the parcel is wholly or partially within one half mile of a property zone, CC 1234, CA 123, and CA 4.
Okay. So that's the proposed amendment. Is there a second?
And so that is?
The same thing I did last week.
Putting them closer to centers and corridors.
For purpose of people being able to use transit.
Right, okay.
I will second for discussion purposes. I can do that. And was, you look like you're about to say something.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Okay, councilmember Sapon, we had a conversation about half mile versus quarter mile. Did you want to talk about that? Did you want to consider that?
Yeah, I've been spending all week and then weeks considering and thinking about it. And I think reflecting on this being a one-year interim zoning change, I think I would like to see citywide up to fourplexes to see what that would look like in the next year. And the next year, potentially consider that. And also look at, how can we work with developers to make sure that we're going to incorporate some affordability in it in the long term, too? So.
Just so we're all aware that we, if we do it citywide, we're including Grandview, Eagle Ridge, Five Mile, or Indian Trail. So those areas that are particularly stretched to provide, and some, like 195, have a rating of F, making sure that we're not creating more of a problem down the road for our city.
So I would say that, because we've gone back and forth with this.
I know.
I think with the year pilot, I think that, well, I think we should try it and see what it does. We know there's, that we're having a housing crisis. We know this is a year. We know we've got staff in Spencer and his group that we can work with, with concerns. I'm willing to take that chance to see where it takes us and what we can do and to see how many plans we get. I mean, how many developers we get saying, I want to do this and this. I would be really curious to see that information. So I'm willing to try it for a year and see where it goes and rely on the experts, our staff, to direct us. And when we have one of those moments where we're afraid or nervous about a possibility of something going in that we're concerned about, that we have those discussions and see where that takes us.
And I, I'm going to vote for the amendment, perhaps in a losing cause. But it, just to explain to people why, is I think there, when I look at the map, if we did half a mile from a center corridor and a half a mile from a transit, the vast majority of the city would be covered. But there would be a few sections that wouldn't be, and those are the sections that are the most distressed with transportation right now. And so I am also cognizant it's just a year. So with that same logic, I would say, all right, well, let's see how it goes around the rest, and I would do it. So it's a slight difference. I'm totally supportive of the overall ordinance and that work, but that's my reasoning.
I think we're going to be a party of two.
Okay. All right, yes.
Yeah, and I would say like, a big factor that weighed on me was, do we want to create neighborhoods that exclude some people? And as a teacher, I see that impact in classrooms when we have a lack of diversity in our schools and know how important it is to have integrated mixed schools. And the more that we take small steps, I don't think this will dramatically change neighborhoods, even in the next 10 years. But I think if we can incrementally get there, I think it's better. But definitely worried about that growth in the north, north of Francis especially. And so working with STA and partners to help mitigate that. So you as STA board chair next year, hopefully, can help us.
No pressure, okay.
Do you lose your vote and it's your job to make it better? Yeah.
Thanks, councilmember Sapon.
I'll be there to help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree with what Councilman Sapon just said. I feel like we can concentrate it in certain areas as opposed to, I think we would see certain neighborhoods disproportionately impacted in the city as opposed to all neighborhoods sort of sharing the housing crisis change together. I think that we concentrate them in certain areas. And so that's why I won't be voting for it because I think that we should be doing it citywide. And I think we'll see a smaller change in the look and the feel of neighborhoods if we do it citywide as opposed to centering it in certain areas.
May I add one thing? So the other piece is, when you look at the property values, so people are going to build where they can get the cheapest property. They're not going to go to Comstock and buy up a house in Comstock, tear it down, and put in a fourplex because it would be too expensive. So by reason of just property values, we already have that problem. It's not, this isn't making it worse. It's already there. And the only way, I don't know how you would fix that. It's the market. So we're kind of strapped with that already.
And that's, I think, where I trust the market more than the government to lead that.
But you're not going to get what you want because of the market.
I think we will get what we want. I think it is.
All right. Any more discussion on the amendment?
I would just, my last thought on this is, I've said this for a while, and I just, I want to believe that everybody can live in the neighborhood they want to live in. So I want to move forward to this to see if that's true. If it's not true, then we figured that out in a year. But if I'm somebody that wants to live in the Five Mile neighborhood or Indian Trail, and there are some options for me to afford to do that, then I want that opportunity. So that's what I want to see in the year is if that's really what we're going to see.
So councilmember, there's no affordability piece on this.
I understand that.
So you and I can't afford Five Mile right now.
But I could maybe afford a fourplex or a duplex and not a big house with, you know, half an acre of yard.
I don't think we could even afford that on our salaries.
Well, that's a whole, that's a whole nother ordinance.
Council, oh, sorry.
So that's where I'm at. I want to see what we as a community can do, and I think we should, I think we should give it a try.
All right, councilmember Wilkerson.
And I just support this on the whole continuum. So the people who want to move up and can afford it will go to Five Mile or South Hill. Then that opens up other housing at another price point for people to get in. So it's just not a one price point solution. There also has to be built-in movement for upward mobility also because if those people don't move up, then there's no openings at the bottom for anybody else to come in. So I support the half mile, really in all neighborhoods. And the market will drive it, and we can control as much as we can, but we cannot control everything because we're not paying for it. So until we are going to actually pay for it, then we have to see what the market will bear and where developers will come in and play a part in helping to solve the housing crisis.
All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll have a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Kinnear, councilmember Beggs, and all those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And that was you two, councilmembers Sapon. The balance was nay? Any abstentions? None, okay. Amendment fails, it's that substituted version that we just approved a few minutes ago.
It fails worse than it did last time.
All right, I think that brings us to the end of that agenda and that agenda we had already approved last week. So that brings us to the end of briefing session. We'll be back here at 6:00 PM yet?
I'm so sorry. Did we approve the suspension of the rules to do this? Or did we just vote on the amendment? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we did. So we are adjourned until 6:00 PM.